Ready? Okay. I call to order the Monday, November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, regular school board meeting. Roll call soon.
Zinski.
Here.
You're not.
Here.
Benukin.
Here.
Craft here. Liam.
Here.
Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we always start off by reading our district mission and vision statements. So our mission statement is. We educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And our vision statement. The Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven, continuous improvement through our strategic planning process, and tangible results. And I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening. It's good to see you.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda.
There a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Craft.
Yes.
Benukin.
Yes.
Liam.
Yes.
Lizinsky.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Dr. Gaggen, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Um, we have the Bernison Middle School presents to the board, uh, Westlake High School in our last meeting, and tonight we have, uh, Mr. Plantner and Mrs. Verly from, uh, Westlake Elementary School presenting on two different, um, uh, programs that they have going on. And so, um, Sir Plantner, if you want to come up, which, which presentation would you like to do first?
Uh, we'll start. With the green initiatives.
Okay.
So if you have that. Uh, other one, there you go. Thanks. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share a couple of the programs that we have at Westlake Elementary School. It's nice to get a chance at least once a year to come by and talk about something new or different that we're doing. So, um, we're focusing on two areas this evening. Uh, the first is our West Green Initiatives, um, some of the recycling programs that we do that have, um, really evolved over the last couple of years, uh, and how we get that involved as part of our PBIS program at Westlake Elementary School. Uh, and then Mrs. Verly is going to talk about a program called Wes Connect that serves some of our students who need some additional support. So the recycling program at, um, Westlake Elementary is led by two of our staff members who spend a lot of time voluntarily, really, um, being green-minded about what we do in the school, uh, not only recycling, but in a number of other areas as well. So Lori Demcek is one of our speech and language pathologists, and Christine Perry is one of our fourth grade teachers. They spearhead our, uh, green initiatives at Westlake Elementary School. So one of the bigger things that they've done in the last couple of years, um, on the next slide you'll see is that they were uh, applied for and granted funds from the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District to provide more recycling opportunities in the building. So, um, the next slide will show a couple of kids with some of the recycling bins that we have. So, as you know, Westlake Elementary is a very large school with a lot of classrooms and a lot of office spaces. Um, and so the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District provided those bins for each one of our classrooms. Um, and the teachers worked with the custodial crew and the cleaner crew to make sure that it was done in such a way that they would be able to do it, um, effectively within the time that they have within the day, and that we could do it in such a way that helped educate the students as well. So that's what you see on the sides, actually, is the, those are magnets. So on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, we spend time talking, or we have spent time helping the students understand what is recyclable and what's not recyclable, right? So we have big recycle bins, we recycle garbage cans, but if we put things in there that aren't recyclable, then it's sort of a whole waste of time in general, right? So we spend time working on that each day. So the students know what they can recycle, what they can't recycle, they throw wet paper towels in there, it spoils the entire, uh, recycle bin, for instance, right? So the magnets, what they do, those are used by our cleaners and our custodial crews. So each night when they come to the classroom, they either leave a green magnet with a smiley face saying, "Good job, class. You did a great job with your recycling initiatives." Or if that day they had to throw the recycles in the garbage because there was something in there that wasn't quite right, that's where you see that red face. So those magnets are two-sided, and the custodial crew and the cleaners are part of the initiative so they can have that communication piece with our students. The next slide actually has a couple of those short videos that our students wanted to record, which doesn't look like Todd has access to. Sorry about that. So they're really just videos of the students showing like, "Hey, you can recycle this and good job," or "Hey, you shouldn't be throwing that in there. Let's make a better choice next time." So I apologize that the videos aren't working, um, that we put together, but that part of the initiative ties into our PBIS programs, our Positive Behaviors, Interventions, and Supports, which I think is shown on the next slide, where we focus each day on our Fab Four. So we have kindness, responsibility, respect, and safety. And the Green Initiative, in this case, ties very closely to our responsibility. So the students have wow tickets, they're called, at Westlake Elementary. So when students make good choices and we want to send a positive note home, or they've done something noteworthy, they can earn a wow ticket for kindness, responsibility, respect, or safety. And then in addition to that, they get to put a sticker in one of these spots for the class that goes towards a class reward. So the recycling initiative ties specifically into responsibility. So each day that they have one of those green smiley faces that shows that they've recycled appropriately, they get to fill in one of those spaces on their responsibility chart, and that helps them work towards a classroom reward. So not only is it helping with the recycle initiative, but it helps with the overall PBIS initiative and the the sense of responsibility in the building. And then we use those actually to track data as well. So it helps us keep track of how are we doing with our kindness initiative? How are we doing with our responsibility initiative? And if we have, you know, a hundred responsibility cards that get completed and ten kindness cards get completed, we know that we need to focus a little more on one area, um, than in another area. So those help us with our data as well and tie really well into the Green Initiative. So a couple of other parts, uh, that are linked to the recycling program and the Green Initiative is just collaboration with the West PTA. The PTA does have a sustainability committee that is established to help with this and with our garden club. Uh, they work with us to increase the presence of recycling containers at their meetings and events, um, and to really help with that initiative as well. Uh, we do have efforts specifically to not only recycle, but to reduce the use of certain things that we use in the building. Um, so many of our office secretaries collect envelopes that can be reused for when funds need to be turned in or things need to be sent to classrooms rather than using a brand-new envelope. We get something in the mail that has one of those little windows in it. We can reuse those, um, particularly if it has a, uh, like a self-addressed stamp returned type of envelope in there. Um, and then just reminders about being really ecologically friendly with our copying as well. Particularly at the elementary school, there are a lot of photocopies made and we use a lot of paper. So we do try and reduce that as well, so that reduce, we reduce that waste. Uh, we have a supply swap that has been really successful, uh, at Westlake Elementary School. Uh, teachers, you know, parents bring in their supplies each year, um, and some teachers might go through all their pencils where other teachers don't go through all their pencils or glue sticks or pens or erasers or whatever it may be. So the ladies who, uh, lead our Green Initiative at Westlake Elementary collect all those items that parent, that the teachers don't use in their classroom. So then if you do need more crayons, you can go get the crayons. If you do need more pencils, you can go get the pencils. And this year, um, we actually eliminated some things from the supply list because we had enough that we didn't need to ask for them, right? So rather than having those pockets of a dozen things here and there all over the school, uh, our green team collects all of that to try and be, uh, really conscientious about how we use those items as well. Um, and then we do do a staff presentation, uh, during our initial professional development day that just talks through recycling. I don't know, Todd, if you want to click on that, you can, and if it shows, it'll go through real quickly. It's just a real quick reminder of like, what's recyclable and what's not recyclable, right? Like, can you throw your coffee cup in the recycle bin? Yes or no? Can you throw, you just click through them real quickly. Can you put Clorox wipes in the recycle bin? Yes, the containers, keep the lids on jars. We don't recycle glass there. We do recycle cardboard. Um, and so it goes through a lot of examples, like, don't throw your food waste in there. That's not recyclable. That's compostable. Tissue boxes, we don't recycle tissues, but you can recycle the box. So all these pointers that help with our staff, uh, but that our staff then also share with their students so that they can get an idea of what's recyclable, what's not recyclable, and how we can be more conscientious along those lines and really focus on that responsibility aspect of our PBIS initiative. Because I think that's, yeah, if you can get back to the original. So we do have a school-wide Earth Day, um, uh, Spear Week that we highlighted last year as well to try and highlight some of those initiatives. Um, and those are, those are the green efforts that mostly have been implemented in the last couple of years, uh, and have really done a nice job in the building with helping us be a little more ecologically minded. Thanks.
Do you want to then introduce, um?
Absolutely.
Talk about. Oh, do you want to ask questions first?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, um, I have two. Uh, what's the student response been? Are they real? Um.
They're.
Positive about this?
They are. They're motivated by it. Um, they want to earn those rewards in their classroom, right? And so it's at an elementary level particularly, there's always a balance between intrinsic and extrinsic motivations, right? So the reward provides that extrinsic motivation that hopefully helps the kids intrinsically think about how they're helping the planet. Depends on the student, right? Some of them are very intrinsically motivated to recycle. Um, others just are really concerned about that sticker so they can earn their class reward. But either way, I think it helps us, uh, with the responsibility aspect for the students.
Sure. Okay, um, is there a continuation of the recycling at DIS and LBMS then, do you know?
We have not connected with the other buildings specifically, so I don't know actually what the recycling.
Because it would be a shame if they're getting all this at Wes and then they go and it's dropped. I mean, it would be nice to see a continuation going on.
I think that's a great next step, yeah. I mean, and I know the grant that they applied for and they received the funds for was work, right? But I think it was worth it. So certainly if that's something that the other schools um, are interested in, we could pass along the information that we used. Yeah. Thanks. So Mrs. Verly is our, uh, new school social worker this year. Uh, she's been an amazing addition to our team. Uh, she's really done a great job, um, not only helping students directly and families, but also collaborating with our school team and helping us become stronger overall and how we support students and how we support families. Tonight, she's going to talk a little bit about our Wes Connect program that serves some of our students who are more at risk and need, uh, a little more specifically identified areas where they can get involved and have adult connections in the building. Um, we originally talked about having some students come and share their experience with Wes Connect, but there's a confidentiality issue related to students who are at risk and need extra help. So we felt it was best that a staff member talked about it, and I know that Chrissy's got a couple of quotes from the kids to share. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Alright, thanks for having me. Happy to be here. Okay, so Wes Connect is a program. It's not new to Wes, but we've brought it back this year. Um, the counselors, and I work really closely on this in deciding which students can participate, and I kind of do the coordination with, um, pairing the students with staff members who want to be a part of it. So you can go to the next one. I won't read this all to you, but it's a jobs program. So it's, um, a way for students to connect, take pride, increase independence, instill leadership, and build relationships in the school. So, um, what we do is we send out, I send out a flyer to teachers, letting them know what the program is, and if they were interested in taking on a student for the school year, um, they would be kind of like a job mentor. So they would decide something in their area or their office or room that the student could easily do once a week, and they were in charge of meeting with the teacher to decide when that would happen and how, how that would look and what the student is capable of handling. Um, it is, like, uh, Mr. Plantner was saying, it's designed for students who are in need of a little extra support. So we tell teachers it's probably best to have a kid who is already receiving some kind of support, but a little bit more would be helpful, a little more sense of connection, another adult that they feel like they have, um, in the building as somebody they can go to when they're struggling with something. So, yeah. Um, and, yeah, struggling, forming connections, seem withdrawn or uninvolved. And, uh, you can go to the next one. Okay. So these are the type of jobs that the students do. They're pretty easy. We're not having them write grants or anything. So it's, um, watering plants, sorting mail, delivering papers throughout the building, straightening bookshelves, sweeping the floor, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and the studies do show that movement, you know, we have a lot of students that have some issues with hyperactivity and the movement is really needed. So this is an extra way for them to get that movement as well. So we try to keep that in mind when we're pairing students, like, what level of activity will be helpful for them to have.
So what does it mean washing fidgets? What, they're like fidget spinners and stuff, but do we have?
Yeah, so, um, I know like my office, I have a huge tub of fidgets for students to use. So they would take like antibacterial wipes and wipe them all down to make sure that they're not spreading germs.
Sure.
So, yeah, that's what that means. Um, and there are studies on jobs programs within schools, um, especially with students who are at risk, and they've been shown to increase connection and a sense of belonging, which in turn boosts academic success, decreases feelings of isolation and anxiousness, and decreases aggression. So we're, um, just excited to kind of boost the feeling of a school community here. Um, and the teachers really seem to like it. We had a lot of interest and people that were willing to give up their time to do this. And it's also cool because some of the students that are involved are, um, they are being put with a teacher that is in a different grade, a grade above them, so that as they move on later into DIS or into Wes, they will have somebody in the building that they're familiar with, and that's also helpful. So it just makes you feel more connected in the building. Okay? And like Mr. Plantner said, uh, it would be, it would have been really fun to have students here talking about doing this, but, um, you know, trying to maintain confidentiality for them. I went around and interviewed some of them, and they are little, you know, the smaller ones. So we have a kindergartner, a first grader, and a second grader. And these are some of the quotes that they had. So one said, "I like being in Wes Connect. It makes me feel happy." And the other one said, "I like helping the teachers." So just teachers in general. And then the last one, "Doing my job makes me feel good and proud." And, um, that's pretty much the gist of it. And if you ever have questions about it, you can always email me or call me. Anybody have any questions?
I would imagine you have plenty of staff that want to, uh, volunteer.
Yeah.
And how many students would you say are participating?
Um, so right now we have nine staff and three students have already started.
Okay.
But the counselors are working on, because right now we're getting a lot of kids into small groups and other types of support. So once those are set up for the year, then we'll know which kids could use these, this extra layer.
Good, good. And you said that it was, that you brought it back. Was it not in place last year?
I don't know. I was not here last year, but it seemed like it had like started to get going and then it just kind of fell.
Okay.
I'm not really sure. Um, but I, I know that this was kind of like a revamp of it. And now that I'm in the building, I have the capacity to be able to focus on these types of projects. So, you know, teachers are, they have a lot more going on. Um, so, yeah, I'm happy to take it on, and it's been a really nice time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Alright.
Um, just something quick for Mr. Plantner for the, uh, Green Initiative, um, the Ohio EPA Grants and Awards, we should, from two years ago that we found out about, we should make sure you get that information.
Yeah, absolutely. And the Wes Connect program, like, it takes, it takes a bit to, to coordinate that, right? Like, when a student has a daily job to make you sure that at the same time every day they're going to their job, or whether it's weekly, I have a student who literally would just come and change the date on my calendar every day, right? But that, like, daily connection and that daily opportunity to develop that relationship had a positive impact on me being able to touch base with him every day and how's your day and have a positive interaction, um, particularly at the beginning of the day to help, you know, focus on having a positive day. So just even the littlest things can make a big difference. Uh, but it does take time on the part of the, of the social worker and our counselors to coordinate all of that, which is why I think it kind of tapered off a little bit last year. Uh, but now that Mrs. Verly's taken over, we're back in good shape. Yeah, thanks for letting us present this evening.
Now, you have conferences.
We do. We have parent-teacher conferences this evening.
At the book fair, if anybody wants to go.
Correct, yeah. If anybody out there wants to get to the book fair, it's open till eight o'clock tonight, and I'm going to head back over to the building.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have your report.
Sure. So I have some items, uh, on here since our last board meeting, um. So these are November items here. Uh, this month, some central office administrators and most of our board members were able to attend the Ohio School Board Association Conference in Columbus. Um, as usual, credit to OSBA. They did an excellent job of numerous breakout sessions that are relevant to every aspect of operating a school district. It was good from everyone, from Adam House coming into his new position, to curriculum, to, um, uh, tech components for cybersecurity and all that sort of thing. So it was, uh, uh, very good conference, and I'm sure some will make comments and board comments. Um, November fourth, we held our second professional development day of the year. Now, it was the first one where, the, the very first one of the year was before the school year started. This is the, the first PD day we did where we didn't have the kids come in. Um, this is, um, these are very complicated days for administrative team to plan. When you have a social worker, when you have a, a world language teacher, a science teacher, a math teacher, and then all the different grade levels that fall within that, there's a lot of planning that has to happen in order to make sure it's worthwhile for all of our staff. Um, and on the same token, it's also exhausting for our staff. Because when you, during the school year, we get three of these days where we have students stay home, which I'm sure you didn't mind having to stay home, but, uh, but we do value those days, and so we try and get a lot done that day. So for the staff, it's like a whirlwind from when they come in to when they leave. So we're grateful to the administrative team for the planning and our staff for their involvement in that. Um, another item to mention is our preschool was just awarded the Gold, uh, Award by the state of Ohio. Um, this is not going to stay here. It actually showed up and was very wrinkled. Um, so we just hung it up to hopefully get some of the wrinkles out and then get it over to the preschool who deserves it. This is the highest rating a preschool can receive. We're grateful for the entire preschool staff for all they do for our youngest learners. Um, last Sunday, I attended an open house at our West Cleveland Muslim Association. As always, their hospitality is unmatched, and they always do food, and it's delicious. Um, the information session was great. It was very similar. I know the board has gone there before. Um, very similar presentation, um, that, that we've seen before, but with a few, uh, additional items. Social time was fun as well. Um, I also want to commend them for the work they've completed inside. I think when we went as a group, um, it was primarily the first floor was, um, was done. Now they have the second floor done, and it's beautiful. I mean, when you, uh, look at what they did with the ceiling and everything, it's gorgeous and, um, you, you don't, you don't feel like you're standing in an old, was it a Bally's or whatever it was, but, um, so just an incredible job there, and, and we always appreciate the invitation. Um, newsworthy item, just to, to mention, uh, to the board and, and the community as well. Um, last week, the teacher pension program, which is the State Teacher Retirement System, or STRS, just in case I start using the acronym, they voted to temporarily, temporarily reduce the number of years required to receive an unreduced pension from thirty-four years to thirty-three years. Um, they're keeping that open right now through twenty twenty-seven, and what they're doing is they, they did the same move with thirty-four. And then they, um, wanted to see if they could fiscally sustain it. And right now, they believe they can do that with thirty-four years. So they've lifted the end date on thirty-four years. They're doing the same thing with thirty-three years. Um, they have it through twenty twenty-seven, and if they find that the, the fund can handle it, my understanding is they would consider continuing the thirty-three permanently as well. So why do I bring that up for Westlake? Well, going into this year with that uh, retirement year being thirty-four years, we had seven teachers who were newly eligible for retirement. So that's on the thirty-four years. And with them making this change mid-year, that adds an additional eight teachers who are now eligible. So that pushes us from seven eligible to fifteen eligible. So that's a, it's more than double, you know, when, when you look at that, that move right there. Now, add on top of that, we have an additional five teachers who have previously been eligible but have chosen to stay. So, you know, that puts us to where, with that move, it puts us where we have twenty uh, teachers who are now eligible, um, for retirement this year. How many will take it? I don't know. Um, you know, it depends on the position you're in. Every year you stay, you get an extra two point two percent. So some may say that, you know, I'm at thirty-three, the percentage is fine. I think it's seventy-two point six or something like that. That's fine with me, so I will, I'll, I'll go ahead and go. Some will say, "I want to go wait for the seventy-four point eight or the seventy-seven percent." So it just depends on, on where people are, and some people may just not be ready. You know, they want to keep going. But for us, when it comes to planning and staffing purposes, it's good for us to know that we have twenty teachers who are eligible that we know of. And I clarify saying that we know of because we also have, we know how long people have been with us. We don't know how many years. Somebody could have purchased from military experience, from a leave, um, from a, a, a different school assignment or something like that. So we have a guesstimation, you know, a pretty good idea, but there always can be some people who have some years that we don't know about, so they're not quite in, uh, our list that I just mentioned. Um, oh, also this month, yeah, the Westlake Schools held multiple Veterans Days. On all of our campuses, there was, uh, some sort of veteran celebration, whether it was Friday or Monday. Um, and I do have, uh, and if you haven't, the, so the elementary school hosted about seventy-five veterans and over two hundred people, um, on theirs. And Katie Easton, before you play on that, Todd, um, Katie worked with, uh, the Impact Group. This is a thirty-eight second video, so it's a quick video here. But, and it is in like phone portrait mode, because it was actually designed to release on social media, so people could view it on their phone. So if you want to just show the, the thirty-eight second video, you can just get a glimpse of that day. So this is the reverse parade they did at the end, where the kids stand out and cheer the veterans as they're leaving. And then there was an inside recognition that had, that's one of our high school choirs, and it had, we had fourth grade choir as well. I think it was. Presentations, mayor was there, many board members. And that's it. That's my, uh, report for this evening, and, uh, also just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, let me get things loaded up here real quick.
We gotta go over the five-year forecast again?
We are. It is one of the most exciting days in all of the school year. Uh, I know that, uh, you guys, uh, made fun of it, but it is for me an exciting time. Um, twice a year, uh, the school districts across Ohio are required to file a, uh, forecast with the state of Ohio. Uh, our five-year forecast looks at the last three years in actual data, and then five years going forward. Uh, the forecast really is a, uh, projections. It is a, uh, a guesstimate. Uh, you know, to the best of our abilities, uh, but as we look out five years, it's always difficult to judge both revenue and expenditures. Um, I know the information on the screen, uh, whether you're here in person, um, or even, uh, on YouTube, there is going to appear very. I know the information on the screen, whether you're here in person, or even on YouTube there is going to appear very small. All of this information, the presentation, as well as the full forecast. And by twenty plus pages of what are called assumptions, the backup data that that guides my decision-making on the forecast. Is available on our board docs website. Under tonight's meeting, you'll find the presentation here under the treasurer's. Report, and then you'll find all of the data, the forecast and assumptions under the. Actual recommendation of the approval of the five-year forecast. I would like to take a little bit of time to go through it tonight, just talking through some of this to give the board an a a general overview. First and foremost, I do want to thank Mister Kraft and Mister Fanukin. Who have taken time out of their days to have conversations with me to review this forecast. I appreciate the wealth of knowledge that the Board of Education members bring to this community. And to me personally, giving me some of that that financial experience that they have to help guide my decisions on the forecast. You'll see as a general rule of thumb, I try to be conservative in my forecasting. I'm pretty fiscally conservative, and that's gonna be reflected in in two ways. Our revenues are gonna be more, are gonna be a little bit lower than probably what they'll actually come in. And our expenditures are going to be a little higher than what I hope to actually spend. This allows us to bank a little bit more money. At the end of each school year, but it also allows us to plan in case something would happen. We've been fortunate over the past several years as we've continued to build our cash reserves. And I know on on this screen right here, it is a small to see, but we did finish last school year. With an ending cash balance of a little over thirty-five million dollars. That's roughly seven months of expenditures for the district, so it positions us very, very well. As we go into this, well, we're in November, we're nearly at the end of November here, so we're already four months. Five months into our new fiscal year, but as we project the numbers for this fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Even though I'm projecting a deficit spend, because we've built that cash reserve, it positions us well. A former manner of mine would refer to it as the cookie jar. We've built that cookie jar, we've continued to build it over the past several years, at some point, we're gonna start drawing from it. And that's okay, we have it there for us, but when that. When that clickover happens, when we start to draw and draw from it, will really guide our decisions on how to move forward. As a reminder to our community, we've not passed a new operating levy since two thousand and six. We're one of the very few districts.
What year was that?
Two thousand and six. We're one of the few districts in the state of Ohio that have come anywhere close to that type of piece. We're now, well, it was May of two thousand and six, so you're well over eighteen years. We're coming up on nineteen years soon. I don't project us to be on the ballot next year by any means, so you'll easily clear the nineteen year hurdle. And potentially twenty years or longer, which is truly unheard of in the state of Ohio. With the challenges that school funding brings. Looking at the forecast, breaking it down into each of the the different pieces. Versus we look at through revenue. The majority of our money, the majority of our resources come through local taxes. So as we look at this fiscal year, we're projecting a little over forty-five and a half million dollars in. Local tax revenue. And that is from our taxpayers in the community of Westlake, this can be businesses and homeowners. That when their taxes are paid, it goes to the county, collects it, and then our portion gets sent over to us. You know, one of the odd things I've run into this year is. We know that there's a major revaluation that happened, we've talked about it at previous board meetings. Throughout this calendar year, we project that revenue, and this projection is actually given to us by the county. They project that revenue to increase about two million dollars a year. It goes into effect January first of twenty twenty-five, so it. So for this fiscal year, I we would only get half of that. So even when I include a million dollars more in tax revenue. It's still showing less revenue than we received last year, and last year is the actual. I try to be very defensible in all the numbers that I use, and this is really well, I I'm struggling with. We are using a one hundred percent collection rate, okay? On certified numbers from the county. So when we take the numbers from the county, we back out the. Homestead rollback, homestead exemption, that's farther down, and I'll and I'll show that in another slide, but when we back that out. They're projecting us at forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-four point six million dollars or so, I've added another million dollars in. And we're still lower than last year, so I'll be honest, I I think we'll be higher than that. What's happening for us is twofold that increases the local revenue. One is if there's a direct sale. So if you sold your home during twenty twenty-four, okay, and the new homeowner moves in. And you sold it at a higher value than it was valued by the county, so the value might have. The county might have only valued it a hundred thousand dollars, you sell it for a hundred and twenty-five, well, the new homeowner will start paying taxes. On the higher value. Remember, real estate is valued essentially at whatever somebody's willing to pay for it. So when when that new homeowner comes in, they've paid a higher value, they're gonna start paying a higher value. On that, so we're gonna see an increase in our. Inside millage, the amount of money we collect on our inside millage. House Bill nine twenty restricts the other growth there, but on the inside for that increase, we'll see a little extra revenue. The other piece is, what's not subject to House Bill nine twenty is new construction. And we continue to see some new construction throughout Westlake. One of the oddities that that we see here that is not. Certainly not all over the state, you have pockets of it, and we're one of those pockets, where you're seeing older, smaller homes. Valued at a lesser amount, being purchased and torn down. Or even two adjacent properties and both of them being torn down, and a larger, more valuable home being built. When they tear down the older homes, that property goes down to a. Building value of zero, and so the new home is considered all-new construction, and will add to our. Tax, increased tax revenue, so I think those are really the two areas that you're seeing. As I point out in my assumptions, I never count on new construction. I just don't know when it's gonna be finished, construction in in progress is not added to the tax duplicate. So even if we drive around and say, oh, well, look, this one's, you know, probably gonna open, you know, next year. I don't count on it for purposes of our forecast and revenue pieces there, so. You know, we're gonna see some increases, I show that million dollar increase this year, I show an additional million dollars, which will be the culmination of the two million dollars a year. Starting in twenty twenty-six, and that's carried going forward, but really I show no other growth, although I think we will see it. I'm just not showing it in the forecast. The next piece, the next largest piece that we get in revenue-wise is going to be from state grants. So we have, this is what they call your state foundation funding, the state of Ohio did change their foundation funding formula. Back a a few years ago. And then they changed it again last fiscal year, twenty twenty-four, and they allowed the district going from a five percent minimum state share to a ten percent. Minimum share, state share due to lobbying efforts of the Alliance for High Quality Education. As we look at this, you know, last year, we we brought in somewhere around four point one million dollars. Now, part of that, in that second line, restricted grants and aid also includes what's now referred to as threshold costs. It used to be called catastrophic costs, it's for, it's to reimburse a district for expenses. For students with special needs who often require significant resources. So this might be a student that qualifies for what's called category six. Because of their needs are high, and we may work with the Cleveland Clinic Autism School, and that student may attend there. Because it's determined to be the best placement for that student. The district pays that bill, it is, unfortunately, it's it's not cheap, so there's a. An amount that the state says this student should cost you this much. We spend significantly more than that, that's that catastrophic cost, or now called threshold. So last year, we got a couple hundred thousand dollars in that, I never, I really don't count on that a whole lot, because that changes from year to year. It also changes based, not just on the students that we have attending our district, or where they may be placed, or the resources we're spending. But it's also determined based on the pot of money that the state sets aside. And the number of school districts that apply to get reimbursed, so it's really, it has very little transparency in it. So I do, I I don't show it carrying forward, so that's why you see that reduction there. You know, I am showing the three point five million, that's roughly what we are expected to get this year, and then that three hundred and fifty thousand in the restricted aid. And I carry those forward, a, an area of risk that we have, when we look at that carried forward, we are in the second year of the biennial budget. Starting in fiscal year twenty-six, the the state of Ohio will need to pass a new budget by July first of twenty twenty-five. They do two-year budgets, if they change the funding formula again, take us back down to a five percent district, I don't know what they're gonna do. But that's an area of risk, but because it is current law right now, I I am carrying it forward as as currently. And then the other piece that we have is the other revenue side of it, and you'll see the reimbursement. Is the first line, the state share of local property tax, this your homestead rollback and homestead exemptions. This is actually part of the the certified county amounts, it's just the state pays it on behalf, if you're a homeowner, you get a ten percent reduction on some of your taxes. If you live in your home. As your primary residence, you get an additional two and a half percent reduction that the state pays on behalf on some of your taxes. The last line there is your all other operating revenue, last year, we had a a very sizable amount of four point seven million dollars. You'll see there's a number of pieces that that go in there, but I did try to point out that last year. We had two point three million of that was interest income. Because we've had larger cash balances, we've been able to invest that between our investment company, Red Tree Investments. And our bank, Dollar Bank, that has, we have a. Beneficial agreement with us, or with the, for the district with Dollar Bank have interest earnings. So that has turned into a pretty large amount, in fact, a million dollars more than fiscal year twenty-three. And when we go back to fiscal year twenty-two, as rates were still very low, and we were coming out of the the lower rates. And we had some longer-term investments that we were still dealing with lower rates, we had a, you know, a paltry amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Compared to what we saw last year. This year, I've reduced the amount from that four seven to three five, I don't think it will drop that low. We're still seeing that large interest income at this point, you'll see that through October of this year, we've collected seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest. So that is really just over one quarter, it's one third of your fiscal year. So if we would project that out, assuming interest rates kind of stay constant, we would be back in that two point one million dollar range. Or so in your interest income. I don't know if that's realistic, we're seeing some rates drop already, there's talk of some additional rate drops that may happen. Another quarter or half percent between now and the end of fiscal year, but I'm being more conservative there, dropping it down to a lower amount.
On where the talks about the city income tax sharing. Because there's always that misconception that, I know when we were talking about the past levies that we've had. People think that we get money from the city, and that the city could give us money if we needed it, and that is not the case.
That's not the case.
So could you explain what the city income tax sharing agreement is?
So right now, I'd have to look to see if we have any still in in place. But a city income tax sharing agreement often goes into place as an incentive for a business, okay? And what you would do is, I've worked with ones in in my past district that you had a restaurant. And if they had over a million dollars in income tax that they paid for their employees. The school district got a portion of the amount that was paid to the city, okay? That's a city income tax sharing agreement, it's very specific, specific. A business, for a specific business, and then has specific limits in there, and it's in lieu of paying property taxes or doing a. A property tax abatement, what we do have right now is we have a pretty sizable tax increment financing agreement. Tiff agreement on the Crocker Park portion, Block K and American Greetings portion. Block K is a section up by the Cheesecake Factory, and then American Greetings, we know, the American Greetings facility there. The city pays, they they have a tax abatement. They pay the city in lieu of taxes in an amount set. Based on their, I think it's also based on income that they're generating, that goes to pay some of the debt for the infrastructure. And then a portion of it comes to the district as well, there's some minimums in there, we're well over those minimums, I think they were around five hundred and twenty-five. Thousand dollars between the two, we're well over that, I don't have the amount off the top of my head, but. There's different pieces, and and I'll just point out as well as as we're talking about it, payment in lieu of tax agreements, pilot agreements. We've had those with, when people would challenge their property values. We would offer to say, hey, you know what, we'll set a rate different, you can pay us directly, and we'll agree to the lower rate for tax purposes. That authority has been taken away from us. And so last year, we had some run out, because you you could do up to three-year agreements, and so we had some three-year agreements. This year, I think, is the very last, that we have some small payments coming in for the last of the three years, but. It's unfortunately, unless they would change the law, where our hands are tied on those. Moving on to the other side of it is expenditures. We are in a people business, you know, we have students here tonight. Students don't go sit in front of computer screens all day, or sit in front of robots. Or just read out of books, they have staff members who are there to educate them. We have staff members that make sure that we have a clean environment for our students, that we have food available for our students. We have staff members who repair. Different other the buildings and and equipment we have, plow the lots. We have, who get kids to school on the school bus, we are a people business. The majority of your funds in this district are spent on staff, on our staff, salary and benefits. So you'll see here, you know, last year, as we look at our salary and benefits. You had about thirty-four point two million dollars in your personnel services, that's salary. And then your benefits was just shy of fourteen million dollars, I'm projecting that up this year at thirty-six point three million and fifteen million in benefits. The big increase this year going from twenty fourteen, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five. In salaries is really twofold of the ESER funds. ESER funds were the, and specifically ARP, so the American Rescue Plan, and the emergency second, school. Relief, I forget what it was, emergency relief. Piece, I apologize, I can't think of the exact name right now, but it was the federal government's COVID relief funds. And so we received, I think it was something like five million dollars over the the several year-long period. Last year, we exhausted the, all of our ESER funds, as they needed to be spent by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we did it within fiscal year twenty-four by writing off a a about six hundred thousand dollars in salary, that's allowable. And that's how we handled the remaining amount of the ESER funds, the ARPESER funds. So that amount on the screen there of thirty-four point two million is artificially low. Additionally, this year, we have some additional salaries coming on, as we had. Some positions that were paid through our or ESER that were, we've brought in to the board in board meetings, we've talked about. Having those positions carry on, because we think they bring value to our students, and so that's included in your salary, there's also some in. Purchase services later on, but that's how we've kind of combined that, that's why you're seeing the large increase in your salaries there. Benefits are tied to salaries. With the exception of your medical prescription, your health benefits, you know, last year, last year. We saw a large increase, again, this year, we're seeing a large increase. And I'm projecting a ten percent increase in medical benefits going forward, it's a pretty sizable amount. But we've had some pretty difficult renewals as of the past.
That's what we're seeing, right?
We're seeing it across across the board in in medical insurance, it's both inflationary and as people are continuing to use it more. Then really, we have our discretionary funds, and I kind of group them together, as we have our purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay. You know, the big thing that you're gonna see is going from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four, we had a large increase. And purchase services about seven hundred. And purchase services, about seven hundred thousand dollars in purchase services. That, uh, I'm carrying forward, uh, uh, each year, uh, going forward. And, and where that came from is one, an accounting move. Um, I appreciate the work of, uh, Mrs. Perry, uh, in our special education, uh, department. And, uh, we made a, uh, accounting change of charging some of, uh, the students. Who do go to those outplaced, uh, uh, environments, okay, schooling environments. We charged that to general fund and then freed up some grant funds that we're charging salaries to. Okay. Really just an accounting shift. It's not a major, uh, cost difference, just how we account for it. And we've done that for some of the ease of reporting with the federal grants. Uh, so when we look at year over year, that was about a half a million dollars. In cases that we took on the general fund, we knew about that. That was planned for, uh, something that we worked, uh, Mrs. Perry and I worked with, uh, in our grants. But some of the other areas, we saw an increase, uh, due to costs of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in vocational education. We right now in fiscal year twenty four, we play, paid almost one point two million dollars in vocational education. Uh, we saw an increase. Of, um, a hundred plus thousand dollars on contracted student transportation. I know Mr. House is here, who's run our transportation in the past, now our business manager. There are situations where we, i- it just, it's more, makes more sense to contract out the, uh, uh, transportation for students. These are not, uh, your typical students just going from our school home, uh, within the city of Westlake. But this is going to be again, students who might be outplaced at other educational, uh, uh, facilities. Or homeless students that we have to, uh, uh, provide transport, uh, to wherever they may be living at the time. Um, there's a number of pieces that we will contract out and that's gone up significantly last year, unfortunately, because of needs. Uh, we've also saw, you know, a, uh, hundred thousand dollar increase in electricity. You know, hundred thousand dollars more in substitute costs. So we've seen a number of these, uh, you know, costs increase that we're seeing both inflationary, but also because of needs. And that's where you're seeing the large increase in your purchase services. Uh, you know, supplies and materials, uh, it was, uh, down last year, but that's really because we carried a, uh, encumbrance. As our academic services, uh, department, Mrs. Muscles, Mrs. Musselman and Mr. Wilson have, uh, started to re-implement our textbook adoptions. So, um, I am carrying the one point nine million going forward. And then our capital outlay fluctuates year to year. Uh, this is mostly spent through, uh, technology. And it's what, uh, is not covered under our PI, uh, we'll, we'll go into that, uh, uh, piece there. Um, you know, what does this all mean? Uh, really, we're looking at, uh, potentials on a conservative estimate of, uh, uh. Uh, of about a three million dollar deficit this year. Uh, I, I honestly, I don't believe it will be that. I, I can't give you a good target at this point. But, um, my gut feeling is it won't be nearly that high. Uh, so we'll monitor that throughout the year. Again, because we have that cookie jar there, it's not a concern of mine. Uh, but, uh, rather we'll monitor that and we'll, uh, keep an eye on it. We'll see how we finish this, uh, this year and that will help guide our decisions going into, uh, fiscal year, uh, twenty six and beyond. Um, you know, I did have a couple of questions, you know, I know it's been very, uh, there's been a lot of questions out in the public right now. About, uh, uh. The Department of Education and, uh, federal funds in general and, and how that, uh, works for school districts. First and foremost, uh, your, your five-year forecast only looks at your general fund dollars. This doesn't look at our PI, uh, dollars. This doesn't look at, uh, federal funds that we receive, grant monies that we receive. This doesn't look at any of, you know, athletic funds, things like that. This is just your general fund, uh, dollars. So when we look at our federal funds that we receive, you know, last year in fiscal year twenty four. We received, uh, well, I'll put it this way, we spent, um, uh, four million dollars in federal funds. Now, two million of that gets directly in those ESER funds. And we know those ESER funds are going away. So that left another two million dollars that we spent last year in federal funds. Uh, part of that is, uh, the Department of Agriculture for our national school lunch program. Okay. So that's run, we received, uh, around, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's both in reimbursement for lunches and then commodities where they do send food to us that we use in our, uh, school lunch program. So the value of that came to about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the remaining one point five million dollars is through other grants, uh, that we have. Mostly in our IDA special education, uh, cluster that, uh, Miss Perry, uh, oversees. And then our Title One program that Mrs. Musselman oversees. Those are our two big grant, uh, programs. Title One is reading a map, uh, improvement specifically, and then IDA is your special education. The prior year to that, we received, um, again, about, uh, we spent about four million dollars. ESER made up only about one point two million dollars of it. Uh, and then, uh, we received a higher amount in our national school lunch program of about nine hundred thousand dollars. As they were still giving, uh, uh, supplements because of COVID. Helping make up funds, uh, of lost, lost dollars because districts were COVID. And then that initial year or half year that we were back hybrid, where we had a loss of funding. Uh, because of the lunches, uh, lower amount of lunches. So, uh, you know, we're seeing somewhere though, around that one and a half million dollars is what our federal funding spending is through the Department of Education. Uh, it's certainly, uh, we have some unknowns about it right now. Uh, personally, I think that, you know, under the law, the IDA law, you'll still see funding, uh, from the government. Whether it comes through the Department of Education or some other government, I'm not, uh, entity, I'm not sure. But, um, I also think the same about Title One. Title One is pretty universally loved, uh, bipartisan, uh, support. So I think that will stick around. Our other smaller grants though, where we have a couple hundred thousand dollars in grants. Uh, improving teacher quality, ELL, English or English learners. Those are ones that there could be potential of, of reductions there if they would do some significant, uh, reductions in the federal, uh, programs. Uh, that really wraps up, uh, my presentation on the forecast. Is there questions I can answer for you guys regarding the forecast?
I have one question about going back to the catastrophic expenses. Is there, uh, they, uh, they don't cover the full expense. Is there a certain percentage that they?
So again, unfortunately it's, uh, twofold. It's based on your state share. Okay. So we're a ten percent state share and then it's based on how much money they allocate. So unfortunately, I can't tell you. Now, last year we received, if I, if I remember correctly, it was a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollars, something like that. We put in well over a million dollars worth of costs. So it really comes down to what they're choosing to reimburse. We only go for, there are some districts that will nail down every, you know, single expense, uh, through, uh, throughout your special ed program. We go for truly the catastrophic, uh, expenses. And so when, when we put in over a million dollars in costs, that doesn't reflect what we actually spend, uh, on our, uh, uh, students with special needs. But that is determined by their IEP and, and what's best for those students, um, you know, and what their needs are.
Okay. And then the other thing is, uh, that probably doesn't pertain me. But you had it, uh, in your forecast about the substitute teachers.
Yep.
I know there was, uh, we were experiencing a shortage like the last couple of years. Has that eased up at all? Are you aware of that?
Mr. Mayford, would you like to touch on that?
Sure. Um. Our fill rate this year, uh, has been better, or about eighty-two percent fill rate. The, um. I would say most of our costs are at the elementary school. Um. Probably about half, per, uh. We do have four go leagues up there, which really, really helps, um, alleviate classroom inequality. So we're by eighty-two percent through the first grading period. So even once we keep bothering that every quarter. I will take a look.
How does it look, uh, on the horizon for? I know, I think there's less college students going into education now.
I was in a MACHR conference last week. They said there are in Ohio, within the next seven years, seventy percent of the teachers will be all over retired. They said there is only about this year, coming out of school this year in Ohio. About forty-five hundred education records. So we have people leaving and not enough people coming in. So. Um, I think in certain fields it'll be okay, but in specialty fields like math and science, uh, technology. There's gonna be a real battle to get, to get candidates.
All right. So that is my forecast. Uh, other than that, I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, have a safe time if you're traveling and enjoy, uh, the time off this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. And that brings us the next portion of our agenda is, uh, our first hearing of the public. Yes, okay. Um. The public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate. And especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. And, uh, we allot fifteen minutes for, um. The public to speak unless there's a lot of people and we could extend it by a vote. So if there's anybody who wishes to come forward, please come to the podium. Give your name and address.
Uh, my name is Katie Craven. I live on Bonnie Bank in Westlake. Um, good evening. This is a picture of my daughter. Who would be mortified that I'm sharing with in public. Um, my daughter is a fourth grader at the elementary school. When she was in second grade. Two boys discussed the fact that they thought that holding this finger up meant the N-word. Then one of them turned around, called my daughter by her name and showed her that finger. We don't use that word in my house. Her, her father does not use that word. We, she is not exposed to that word. She did not know the meaning of that word, but she knew it was bad. And she told her teacher. Her teacher notified me. The boys apologized, one sincerely and one said, sorry. I had to reach out to the house principal. She did not reach out to me. I asked if I could meet with the parents when they came in to discuss what happened. I was informed that the teacher contact home was enough. Parents were not coming in for a meeting and the goal is to educate the boys, not punish them. I then brought my concerns to the building principal. He again stressed the importance of educating the boys involved. There was no punishment and neither principal contacted the parents. Now we are here. On November seventh, two students in my daughter's class were talking about the N-word. The girl was arguing that it's not fair, white people can't use the word. My daughter interjected and told both of them that it's wrong to say. The girl then actually said the word. My daughter yelled what? And went to the teacher. The teacher took statements from all three kids, including my daughter. This was near dismissal, but after school, the teacher sought out the house principal who was in an IP meeting. She then notified Mr. Plantner before calling me. She told me administration would handle it in the morning. My daughter came home very upset and rightfully so. She did not want to go to school the next morning and only went because she had family attending the Veterans Day event. I thought surely the school would handle this appropriately. Surely they would place that girl in another room until they could investigate, as she admitted to the teacher that she used the word. Surely it would be a priority, but boy was I wrong. After not receiving a phone call, I sent an email to Mr. San Filippo and Mr. Plantner around noon. After I still did not hear from them, I called around two fifteen and left a voicemail. Mr. Plantner called me back about ten minutes later and informed me that he had not investigated yet. My child had to spend her whole day with the students involved like nothing happened. Needless to say, I lost it. I told Mr. Plantner, who had informed me they were taking it seriously, that the response was totally unacceptable. That my daughter should not have to spend all day with a student that used a violent slur. That I should not have to chase an administrator down for the right thing to happen. There are plenty of administrators in that building. The absence of one does not mean the building stops functioning properly. I demanded the girl be suspended per the Student Code of Conduct guidelines and that she be transferred to another class. I was told I can't make those demands and that I did not give him a chance to handle it yet. I told him I'd given the benefit of the doubt and expected a phone call from him once his investigation was over. That phone call never came. When he did pull the students, including my daughter, late Friday, the girl came back to class. And announced that she was not in trouble. My daughter came home and told me that. I thought, well, surely this girl is just trying to save face in front of her peers. But she was not. She never even missed a single recess. And Mr. Plantner's call never came. Midday Monday, after not hearing from Mr. Plantner, I called the board offices. Apparently almost the entire staff was out of town for a conference. Again, I had to use my time to chase district administrators. I ended up leaving a message for the special education supervisor who called me a little later.
That was three minutes.
Okay. Can I have extended time, please?
We don't, the other people would ask.
Perfect.
You can come back.
Yes, yes.
Yelson Karagos, two nine, two nine, two one four fold river drive. Two months ago, we all witnessed another state report card. I mean, we can say that we are a five-star, almost a five-star school district, or we can pretend that we are. But the reality in that report was that we were not a five-star school anymore, school district anymore. Because we lost that. Looking back like eight years ago, like two thousand sixteen, we were very hopeful. We passed it twice, failed levy. We built all of our buildings. Elementary was close to being done. And then we were our, our way to success. We were supposed to take off. Instead, today, eight years later, we almost crashed. For example, American history in that report card has been flashing red at least two years that I know of. And I can't tell you why, and you guys are still trying to figure it out. Some schools just, districts came out stronger after pandemic, but we came out weaker. So I care about this school district. And we cannot continue this downward slope. You're supposed to be going upward. Instead, we're going downward fast. And I believe this lies on the school administrator. And we need in our, uh, superintendent. Basically, we had a poor communication with the Westlake City residents and Paris. I think this administration stopped listening Westlake Paris a long time ago. We used to get like school surveys. I don't remember getting one in two, three years. And district lacked transparency in hiring practices, resulting having wrong staff at the wrong places or excessive staff turnover. Mislocated resources that do not contribute to student success. And under the administration. School, uh, staff lacked accountability in their decisions, actions and performance, burdening Westlake parents and families. These issues hinder our students' growth and undermine our district performance. We deserve, our students deserve a visionary leadership that will put the focus on their learning. Collaborative decision-making that will in- involve their parents. In- inspiring educational environments that will foster their growth, growth instead of penalizing them. This all lies on the leadership. That's why we need a new superintendent when his term expires. A new superintendent can bring student and family-centered focus to learning. Stop the bleeding in our ratings and eventually raise it up to where it deserves to be.
Time's up.
Time's up. Is it up or?
It's been three minutes, yes. Okay.
Time is up. Thank you. I'll, I'll continue then.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, then. Would Matthew continue?
I had to use my time chasing down district administrators. I ended up leaving a message for the special education supervisor who called me a little later. She too stressed that they take this very seriously. She told me she may not get back to me until Wednesday. She told me she may not get back to me until Wednesday. This was on Monday. She did. The call was a waste of time. She also stressed the importance of educating the offender. I already had a meeting scheduled for later that day with Dr. Goggins, so I ended the call. Ms. Maurice and Dr. Goggins met with me Wednesday afternoon. I stated basically everything I've said here. Again, the phrase, we take things like this very seriously was used. I left that meeting feeling angry, as angry as I entered it. The only concession was that communication could have been better. Not that the student should have faced an actual punishment. I told both of them that there is not a deterrent for students to do this again, that my child should not be a teachable moment for racists. And I was right. On November eighteenth, the boy from the first incident and two other boys were involved in using that word again. Again, in two thousand twenty-four, my daughter was exposed to the most vile, violent slur in her school. This time I did receive an admin phone call. This time it was addressed immediately. This time punishments were handed out, but why did we have to get to this time? Why did my daughter have to have her schedule changed? Because that was the only option I was given. When she did nothing wrong here. I've been told time and time again that these incidents are being taken seriously, but the only way to keep my daughter away from racist language is to move her. A move that has totally disrupted her life. I might add. She's complained about not wanting to go to school for years. Now we are at a point where she cries herself to sleep and cries every morning about going to school. In fact, today she spent the afternoon in the nurse's office with a stomach ache. Do I think she's sick? No, I think she hates being in school. So I had to pick her up early today. She had, I had been told that educating the offenders is the goal of the school. What about my daughter's right to a safe education? Jim San Filippo is the only administrator I've spoken to this month that even asked how my daughter was doing. The only one. Things have been said to me by other administrators. This is what I've been told. You can move your child's class. Your daughter has been friendly with the girl since this happened. Because my daughter's not confrontational, I guess that's a punishment on her or a ding on her, right? Um, while she could have gotten suspended for, for ten days for that, that's what Dr. Goggins told me. After I told him that my daughter received recess for doing something last, uh, couldn't go to recess because of something she did last year. He compared taking a piece of candy to using the N word. That was the comparison I got. Oh, my favorite one. She didn't actually call your daughter the word, right? Because that matters. Excerities are not isolated incidents. I believe there is a culture of letting racism slide in Westlake and it is the duty of the school board and district to address this in a substantial way. From the top down, there needs to be professional development and training on how to be culturally sensitive and anti-racist. Every staff member and every student should have meaningful training. We educate for excellence shouldn't just apply to some kids. Every child deserves to feel safe at school. Every child deserves to have the very best education.
Thank you.
As I was saying, we need to stop the bleeding. We need a new superintendent that can bring student and family centered focus to learning. Stop the bleeding in our ratings and eventually raise it up to where it belongs or deserves. Implement prurient but also new strategies in learning in the new digital era. Accountability, accountability in stuff, actions, decisions and performance. Better communication and community engagement. Therefore, I urge the school board to conduct a true performance evaluation. Solicite stakeholder input. Not to offer contract extension when the term is up at the end of the school year. And immediately start exploring qualified candidates. Let's work together to support our students and their families. Enhance their academic achievement. Foster a positive school climate. I know this call has been long overdue. But it's about time that we make this decision. I think we still have enough time until the end of this school year to bring a new superintendent and unite this community and create a brighter educational landscape. Thank you. That you can hear.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward? No? Okay, um. Everybody has had a chance to read the previous minutes of our special meeting on October fifteenth and the regular meeting of October twenty eighth. So if there are no additions or corrections.
Well, I will say that Mrs. Prenop did put in a correction for her name on one of those. That is being fixed and will be fixed in the official record. So I will say, asking for approval as amended.
Okay. So asking for approval as amended, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. And Mr. Hopkins, you're back up again with your treasurer's recommendations.
I am. Thank you very much. Um, in front of the board tonight, I do have five recommendations. I'll briefly go over them. I think we've gone over the forecast in full depth. So that's A, there is the asking for approval in five year forecast. B, I have some appropriation changes, current appropriations from October. Uh, we may, we do move money throughout, uh, the district under the authority of the superintendent and then approval of the board for appropriation. So this is moves that we made in October. Uh, we have a couple of then and nows on there all through the ESC. We have some student activity purpose statements. And then I, E, I added on as a late add, I apologize for that. Uh, this is, uh, often we've done request advances from the county at our organizational meeting. Um, the county has asked for it, I think by December fifteenth this year, so I threw it on this meeting here. Uh, this, um, resolution, all this does is this gives the authority, uh, for me as the treasurer to request money from the county as they collect it in advances. So as you pay your taxes, uh, as our community pays their taxes through, uh, you get your tax bills typically this time of year, maybe into December, you may pay it in December, January, February, and it's like due in March. As it's collected, uh, we can receive that money or we'd have to wait for the settlement. Uh, this allows us to get it faster. It allows us to turn interest on it. It's beneficial to the district, uh, but that's the, we have to have that authority and only the board can give that authority to me to request it. So. Uh, those are the five recommendations. Uh, if it so pleases the board, I'm happy to combine them into one, uh, motion, uh, of five A through five.
I move to approve treasurer's recommendations, five A.
You don't want to keep five A separately?
No, I have no need to keep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I move to approve treasurer's recommendations, five A, B, C, D, and E.
So, second.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Thank you for your thorough, uh, going through of the five year forecast. Uh, I know that that is something that's very important. It's a great, uh, tool for us as a district to have that we can see the, you know, how the future could play out, so.
And I appreciate that and I will, I'll reiterate again, I think I forgot to say, you know, if people see this online, uh, if they go to board docs and, and view the information, if they have questions, please, please, please let me know. I'm happy to discuss it. I'm happy to talk through my thought process on it. Uh, it does help guide the district in our financial decisions, so I'm very open to taking feedback on it.
We do spend a tremendous amount of time in our, um, uh, committee meetings, um, or meetings with the treasurer going over uh, finances, including the five year forecast. So thank you, uh, for that time spent. Um, it's important.
And especially including the, um, assumptions with the enrollment and what's going on. I think that really helps source. Set what's going to be moving forward with regarding staffing in particular with retirements.
Right.
Thank you.
I guess my daughter, my daughter's making the right choice to go to college to be a teacher.
Get a job.
And I appreciate.
I'm a power mather science.
I appreciate your enthusiasm over the way you get excited over this five year forecast.
Does everything?
I know.
Hey, listen, um, as a president, there are school districts throughout out of the county that do not have a five year forecast like we have and we're very fortunate because I've been a part of other school districts that they don't have what we have and we're very fortunate to not be on a repetitive levy schedule, uh, every so many years asking for more money. And that's exactly the reason why I asked um, at the beginning of Mr. Hopkins' presentation, when was the last time we were on, on the ballot? And that was oh six and that's amazing.
It's very unusual. There's some school systems that are on every three years.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I guess they don't, they need a Mr. Hopkins then.
No, they don't. We want to keep him here.
Well, part of that too is testament to leadership of the organization, the school district and, and the board.
Yeah.
Uh, making sure we make the right decisions, right recommendations, so that, uh, we don't overextend ourselves.
True.
And be good stewards of the local taxpayers. So.
Very true. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hey, roll call, please.
Craft, yes. Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Kurna?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Goggins.
All right, so we have one donation to recognize Kevin and Beverly Acker donating a hundred dollars to Westside Connections at Westlake High School. Um, the other items on the agenda, the directors have explained, we're looking at employment of some classified members, the change of employment for a few classified members. Resolution to approve a home instructor, um, some supplemental contracts primarily for, um, winter sports. And then approving athletic supplemental contracts for some classified members. We do that separately. Because we have to pay them differently because if somebody is considered hourly, we need to pay them differently within the supplemental contracts. Um, resolution to approve activity and cub supplemental. As well as a resolution to improve employment of a student worker. And a resolution to approve, uh, the employment of classified substitutes. And a resolution to approve a contract, uh, contracts and purchase services for, um, some of our students through the special service program. And then letter K is one resolution, uh, to amend a previous resolution that we had passed before for correction. So if it so pleases the board, we can do six A separately, but B through K are appropriate to have uh, presented together.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation six A, which is the, uh, gifts and donations? So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? We of course, uh, admire the generosity of our donors. So thank you very much for the gifts.
And we appreciate it too.
Hey, roll call, please.
Kurna?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve super superintendent's recommendation six B through six K?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, questions or comments?
A quick question with regards to, I think it's item E supplementals. So we've got three supplemental, supplement, supplementals on there, um, that are volunteer, looks like, uh, the wrestling coach, diving coach and a basketball coach. Is that just so that we do the background checks on them and?
Yeah.
I mean, we all know Mr. Intonation.
Yeah. So the volunteers are on there because even the volunteers have to be approved by the board.
Yeah.
And, um, background checked.
They have to be background checked, plus they have to have everything that a regular coach has.
I, that's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure. So we have to approve Mike Intonation?
You don't have to.
Unbelievable. No, I'm just kidding. He's a good guy.
Anyone else? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Newken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Kurna?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us in our agenda to our second hearing of the public. Anybody else wishes to come forward? Uh, seeing none approach, uh, we are now at board comments. So I would having not been able to go down to OSBA at the last minute, I'd like to hear some of your experiences, if it was.
I thought it was wonderful. I mean, they have such a wide variety of breakout sessions that, uh, focus on different aspects of, uh, education and school boards and schools. I mean, it's, they always do such a wonderful job. Um, this was my first year to represent our district as a delegate.
Oh, okay.
Um, that was not so interesting.
It was only.
Been there, never.
No, there's actually a cutoff now that they, they cut off. But no, they, uh, um, it was a smooth meeting, but, uh, the breakout sessions were really interesting. I said it in a couple. Um, one having to do with Toledo City Schools and community involvement, and then another one having to do with, uh, Beachwood City Schools um, and their cultural involvement, uh, with their district. So it was really interesting and, uh, um, I always find it very beneficial, um, to go down there and not only sit through the sessions, but to also talk to other cool board members and, um, you know, being, being from Westlake in my second year down there as a Westlake board member, it just brings a smile to, uh, to my face, um, having the opportunity to talk to other school districts to hear their, you know, trials and tribulations and knowing that, uh, uh, we don't face those types of situations here for the most part. And I think it's truly a testament to our staff too that, uh, um, that it's great. It's be, to be able to go down there and say, hey, I'm from Westlake, we don't have that issue. You know, it's, it's really wonderful and, and I think, you know, I, I thank staff and, and Dr. Goggins and our treasurer over there. So it's, uh, it's pretty amazing. And, you know, I've been down there, um, I, I sound like a broken record, but, uh, you know, when I was in Fairview Park, we didn't have this situation and um, I was looking at it through a whole different perspective when I was in Fairview Park and to be able to, you know, be here in Westlake and, uh, to be able to be, um, so far ahead of the ball in my mind. Um, because I've seen what the other side looks like, so to speak. Not, not that it was bad at Fairview Park, but we were working on a number of different issues and it was a different, uh, situation, but, uh, um, I probably talking way too much at this point, but it was, uh, it was really a pleasure being on there and, and being a part of OSBA and, and being able to take advantage of it. So.
Okay, I'm glad it was possible. So, and Liz, um, did you come up with any more money from?
Big rumor.
This is our money this year.
Brian.
I'm trying to give me all of that time. Uh, but no new grants, uh, this year that I found out about, um, but I did, uh, I always try to get into on some of the updated policy ones. And one of the big ones that they were talking about outside of fraud training, which I think he spoke longer about the fraud training than fraud training actually takes place.
Yeah.
Um, but particularly about, uh, particular, uh, setting cash balance policies, particularly a floor. And especially because there's so much discussion going on in Columbus regarding, uh, cash balances for school districts. And, you know, just we are doing a great job on keeping up to date on all those things. Uh, but one of the talks that I went to that was really interesting was about, uh, the different way that different generations learn. And how to engage with them. And that was a really good book called Answering Why by Mike Mark Perna, who's, uh, actually a local person in. Which is a good conversation and how to engage with especially Gen Z and really get them to, you know, why they need to be at school and ways to get them involved. And especially our internship program is something that they were really talking about. And I think we're, since we're expanding that so much, that's definitely going to be sort of scratching that itch there.
Doctor Booker, um, uh, she grew up, uh, her father is a minister and, um, she gave just a very spirited, active uh, two hour session on culture. Um, she was, she was awesome, uh, but it was great. It was on Sunday afternoons. Um, Monday, uh, communication breakout session, um, a presentation which uh, had a basis of crucial conversations. And I know the entire board has been through it was a good, uh, reminder of that. Um, superintendent as well as Bricker Grayden, they gave a presentation with regard to AI. Uh, superintendent from a point of view of, um, how should districts be using? What should we be aware of? Bricker Grayden a touchdown, the legal side of things, um. Uh, some statistics given about seventy-five percent of all students are using AI, about twenty-five percent of staff. So if staff is not embracing AI, start using it, what would you use it for? Um, an interesting, um, presentation right in that session, it's a two hour session, was, um, how well do you know our current policy? And, uh, he took the policy from that particular district's, um, a website in the session in a period of about sixty seconds downloaded. In the session, in a period of about sixty seconds, downloaded it, asked AI to put together a podcast about it and started playing it seconds later. So me, uh, wanting to say re-embrace our policy as I'm driving to, say, Nashville for Thanksgiving. I could play a pretty spirited exchange between a man and a woman, uh, with some banter about policy and I may remember it a whole lot better. Like that, pretty cool.
I can recommend some podcasts if that, if you're looking for something.
But I think he's talking about that notebook. Specific to Western, right? Um, also, um, on the legal side, a, a teacher may be using AI to receive student papers, determining one, how much of it was AI generated. Um, uh, if a teacher downloads that paper, that might happen to have the student's name as, as well as class on it. Now you've got a legal issue, so be careful how you use it. You're putting together a lesson plan, um, and you're up at two in the morning building this plan. Who can you bounce those ideas off, bounce them off of AI? Um, and, and use AI to create your lesson plan. But it was a pretty cool session. Um, I enjoyed, uh, uh, attending. Uh, the Alliance gave a, a presentation as well. I know that we just visited with the Alliance with regard to legal stuff. And we had two elected representatives, um, uh, with some good, uh, healthy debate uh, with people from various districts.
I thought it was great, uh, that Representative Manning from, uh, just right across, uh, the border in Lurie County spoke and, um.
Gail or her son?
Gail, yeah. Yeah, she, she did a wonderful job and it's great to have her, uh, working for education down in Columbus. Um, she was on top of everything that was happening, so.
Yeah. I saw where she's the president pro town. Um, well, good. Uh, okay, any other comments?
Uh, one other thing, uh, I, uh, encountered, uh, a number of Westlake, uh, students down in the Justice Center recently. They were there for law class. It's okay. No, uh, there was a Weslick law class came in on, uh, was the last Tuesday and, and, uh, uh, sat in on Judge John Russo, who's also a Weslick resident, uh, sat in on his, uh, day in court, so, um. The Justice Center being the Justice Center, I heard about it and, uh, uh, both myself and, uh, another Weslecker, uh, um, gentleman named John, John Germain, who I went to school with here in Westlake, he's now a sergeant, uh, for the Sheriff's Department in, uh, the Court Tower. So he and I, uh, both stopped by the, uh, Judge Russo's courtroom and said a quick hello to the Westlake students, which was, uh, pretty cool, because, um, you know, Judge Russo introduced me and said, this is Brad Lamb, he's on your school board. And of course, all of the students looked at me like, who are you? And, and I said, listen, you guys probably would know me better. I'm Caroline Lamb's dad. And then, of course, well, you know, you. But, uh, no, they, uh, had a great experience with Judge Russo and I really appreciate the opportunity that, uh, he affords, uh, the Westlake students to come in and and watch, um, watch, you know.
That is a nice.
And actually, so to speak, so.
Yeah, and it seems to me he would be a very good, uh, uh, teacher or mentor. He, he used to coach, uh, my granddaughter's, uh, basketball way back.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so he has coached also and, you know, a lot of the Wesley.
I could see that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Judge Russo is a good guy and, uh, you know, appreciate the opportunity that he gave me that said quick hello to our students too.
Good.
I was at the council PTA meeting last week and, um, Founder's Day, for you to mark the calendar, is going to be Thursday, February twenty-seventh. In the evening. I don't know, it's something you all want.
Do they know where they're having it yet? Oh, it's, it's okay. That's always a good evening, let's enter.
Is it Lola?
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session? To discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official and to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Newken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Zinski?
Yes.
Kurna?
Yes.
You are in executive session at seven thirty-five PM.
And no action will be taken. So I'm gonna, well, technically adjourn it, but.
Returning to executive session.
Okay.